To order, if you would all please join the council in the
Ahead time without that exit.
Right.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know what you're saying.
The first matter on the agenda is the public comment. I see Mr. Shiman from the school board. Do you have anything to report from the school board, Mr. Shiman?
Yes, actually, I was in Augusta today. There were three bills that have been put forward that would have the impact of taking things away from voters, at least that's what we were there to, on behalf of the main, the education association. The, there's a tendency to, based on what's happened in other states, some people want to legalize strikes and more than that, force binding arbitration, which voters would have no impact or nothing to say about. So, we were speaking, trying to warn against a lack of public participation in the process and taking away openness, because all three of the bills would take away openness of the process and put it as part of teacher negotiations. And we can understand where it comes from, but we're looking to say to them, try to find ways to do it within the open system that we have. And so, two of us went down there today to talk about that. And then, we appreciate having worked with the council on budget, and we look forward to the next steps. And any questions that come that I can't answer, or something Jason certainly answered as, any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Coleman.
Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue, Mayor, Council, and Public. If you look at your organizational chart for the city, in which I was actually surprised, the highest level of management are the citizens and individual businesses and operators of the city of Saco that participate in our business locally. It is not the mayor, it is our citizens. I'm going to speak again tonight, hopefully for the very last time, about the senior tax program. This has been addressed with the city administrator since 2016, two councils, two mayors. As of last week, when we asked for an update during the public comments, when the cameras were rolling and the citizens of Saco were able to hear and answer, there was no response to the question during public comment. We understand. Nor during the city administrator's update. Asked again the question after the workshop, we were informed by Kevin Sullivan, city administrator, this was not a priority, as he has stated in the past. Council members, those viewing from the audience and at home, have been made aware of this issue during public comments in the press for several years. Several councilors have addressed the issue in public and private, yet no work has been completed. At what point does something have to become important? If I was doing this payroll, and I miss these employees, I would have to immediately go back and take care of them. Is the city administrator choosing to overlook this issue, realizing a reporting, a report has been filed verbally with the IRS fraud division? And now, a written report? Is it now time to ask the council to address the issue with Kevin Sullivan, our city administrator, or at the very least, not renew his contract? His failure to delegate to an individual to resolve this issue is major. As of today, those citizens, those senior citizens who are eligible for the earned income tax credit from 215 can no longer receive this credit because they cannot file their taxes. They do not have W-2s. Tax day has come and gone again. Ten years of non-compliancey. When are the seniors going to receive their back pay in the form of the abatement against their taxes? Some are owed 150, some are owed 250. I believe they should earn the 8% interest that is charged to them if they are late, so that they can be made whole as well. I believe that is something that should take precedence, even before the budget season takes place. Citizens, it's now time to step up and ask the council to have this issue addressed. Remember, we, the citizens of Saco, are his boss. He is accountable to us, the mayor, and ultimately to the citizens of Saco. E-mail council@socomaine.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. John.
John Harkins, Forest of O'Toole. Post-meeting last, two weeks ago, or last week, I was discussing the TIF and senior citizens program with the administrator, and it was going fine. Ms. Coleman came up and said that there was an issue that had to be resolved. That led to some very heated discussion, if you will, between the administrator and Ms. Coleman. I truly believe that she is due a public apology for that outburst. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none. First item on the agenda is a workshop item on the traffic light that apparently DOT has planned for, for the intersection of Flag Pond Road and U.S. Route 1. Mr. Sullivan? Do you have somebody that can address that, or you?
Well, I wanted to offer an opportunity to talk about it. I brought it up during my administrative update last week. This is an item in which several counselors had some questions about. It was getting late. I thought maybe we'd bring it back to the floor here for discussion. Our director of planning and development is also here, who's been working to work with the developer and the DOT about the BPI, as well as any questions about why it's required, or why it would be required as part of this project.
Okay, and the council received a memorandum from Mr. Sullivan titled, "BPI Traffic Light at Flag Pond Road." So, any questions of Mr. Sullivan on my right? I see a couple. Yes, Counselor Day. Counselor Doyle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How is a traffic study done without that road being put in that exits onto Route 1?
Thank you, I'd be happy to address that. First of all, just as background for the BPI program, there was a traffic movement permit application that was filed several years ago, way before I got here, by the developer, Elliot Chamberlain for Park North. It was a requirement for him, as a full buildout of the entire development, to actually fulfill the requirements of that TMP. The original requirements of the TMP included several traffic mitigation accommodations, if you will, one of which included to put in and install a traffic signal at Flag Pond Road irrespective of Hancock Lumber or any other new business. It was based upon the original application. Follow that, as Hancock came through and we were reviewing all of those components of that original application, that we determined that the TMP had actually sunset, which basically means that it had expired. It has a five-year life. So, then that TMP, the original one, is now gone. And so, the new TMP, which has just been filed by Park North, which is Elliot Chamberlain, will require new review that's based on current development to date, projected development to come, which now includes Hancock Lumber. And at this point, it's preliminary for us to decide or determine what that's going to look like. But at this time, there may not even need to be a signal, it just depends on what the buildout will be. So, when the TMP outcomes are decided upon, which should be by the end of August, that could include nothing, and just some traffic improvements, like turn lane improvement and circulation improvements. It could mean a traffic signal. So, what we did when we discovered that the BPI program was actually a possibility and in existence, we could actually get money to the tune of 160,000, meaning Hancock would kick in 160, the city through the TIF would kick in 160, and then the business, in this case Hancock Lumber, of which would be a primary benefit, would kick in 160. So, we're preserving our options to be able to have that traffic signal, should that be required. If that isn't required, then we at least have up to 160,000 from the state to put in some traffic improvement issues. What's not yet decided upon, there's a development to the right, depending on which way you look at it, to the north, which is what they call the former driving range. That's under contract right now with a confidential developer. If that happens to come to fruition, then those folks would actually utilize the exit from that development into the Hancock Lumber exit onto Route 1. So, that will totally determine a totally different set of issues. And again, all of this is being calculated right now. They can't do traffic counts at this time of year, it's not very effective, the numbers aren't utilized in this traffic study. So, as they do the traffic study come, like, late May, early June, then we will know exactly what that looks like. But in the meantime, we are preserving our option to have that traffic signal, and we're preserving our ability to get 160,000 from the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor? None? Counselor Doyle.
Mr. Mayor, Denise answered my question, thank you.
Okay. To my left, any questions? Counselor Minton.
With all that in mind, I'm somewhat concerned about the planning of these developments and the potential that we could have in the future, a traffic light where Ready would exit onto 1, where Waterfall exits onto 1, where Flag Pond exits onto 1, and then Cascade, where it currently has a light. So, we could have four traffic lights in, what, a mile and a half, which would obviously, if we have something at the Turnpike, muck up traffic. Now, you've got four lights going up, one as people are trying to go up, one to get, re-access the Turnpike up in Scarborough. So, I just hope that we utilize some forward thinking on these to prevent that inevitable scenario from playing out, if we can. Thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none. So, Mr. Sullivan, we look to having this on the meeting for, oh, excuse me, Counselor Doyle.
Yes, thank you. So, I just want to ask the question, why can't they use Waterfall Drive as sort of a reverse frontage road to get to either Cascade Road or get up to Waterfall Drive at the, at the credit union? Why do we have to create another access point off of Route 1? Because historically, we did that in Hamburger Alley, as some have referred to, and it created a bunch of, you know, jam-ups, because you have not only people going in and out of businesses, but you also have four or five lights right there. We're going to cause the same problem all the way up Route 1, and then we're going to end up with long traffic logs, like you see in Agunkwit, Wells, Kittery, places like that. We don't want to do that. So, why can't we use the Waterfall Drive as like a reverse frontage road, which, you know, Horton Half serves as, as sort of a reverse frontage road? So, I guess that's a question.
Again, all of that is being taken into consideration, which is why I alluded to the fact that the original calculations are actually looking favorably about not having a traffic signal. So, it's, all of that stuff is going to be taken into consideration. There may be a requirement to send them out through Waterfall Drive, up Cascade, and take a right or a left at the signal. But again, it's all about the traffic counts and the projected. Another unknown, back then, was Ready Seafood, with about 200 employees, and depending on where they determine where that traffic's going to flow from, whether it's from the north or the south, that is also going to play a part that was not even in anybody's imagination five or six years ago. So, again, it's DOT's jurisdiction. DOT will decide, depending on the results. And again, we should have the results of that study anywhere from end of June, early August, and at that point, we'll have that conversation.
Follow up, Mr. Mayor. Please. Counselor Doyle. I remember meeting with Ready Seafood. They assured us that their trucks would be coming southbound out of Scarborough, be turning in, making a right-hand turn only, and then when exiting, making a right-hand turn only, and going down towards, to get on I-95 at our exit. They liked that aspect of, they would not be tying up the road. So, with that, and the fact that they said that they're going to try and hire from Saco, from the community, I don't see that there's going to be a large traffic draw. So, you know, in looking down the road, no pun intended, we need to really look at that area and make sure that we don't jam that up with the traffic signals, because there is already one planned or being looked at, at the Waterfall Drive area over by the credit union, so, or the bank.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Any other questions to my left? Seeing none.
So, let me just process for this. Again, we don't have, currently have a proper process in place, but I think as part of this budget process, we will, going forward, about expenditures from TIFs. So, as we talk about planning and development tonight, we're going to talk about what we intend to use resources next year for in the TIF. Currently, we don't have anything scheduled or planned or a process for council to make those decisions. So, what I'll do is look to the council on the 29th to support the use of these resources out of that TIF. It's not a budget amendment, you're not using general fund resources for it, you're using another reserve account, essentially. So, what I'll do is ask the council to support this, if it actually comes to fruition. It really depends on the traffic counts later. It's just, we applied for this BPI, and I wanted to know that I have council support, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The next item on the workshop is the Dog Park, and the council received information in their packet associated with the Dog Park expansion. Sullivan, do you?
Yep, the Historic Preservation Commission also met last week and approved this through their, their process.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I have council support for doing this project. I believe Ryan Summer is here, in case you have questions about what the park's going to look like, or size of park, or any of those questions. But again, I'll bring, look to bring this on the 29th for council support to do so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Counselor Copeland.
I don't have a question, but I do want to comment again that it is through the generous support of one of the residents in our community, and so it's not a cost to us, so that we should all embrace this generous gift.
Thank you. So, next up on the agenda is the Police Department Budget Presentation. Deputy Chief Clement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Thank you for having me up here tonight. Start off with the organizational chart of the Police Department, and then our mission statement. With dedication, pride, and commitment, we serve in partnership with our citizens to provide a safer, healthier, and peaceful environment. As you can see, our responsibilities are law enforcement, crime prevention, criminal investigations, and emergency communications. Looking at our major accomplishments over the last year, we're working through policy updates that hadn't been done for quite some time, so those are ongoing. Those policies are being put into a program called Power DMS. This is an excellent tool for tracking these things. All the officers get them, they get to go in and check all the policies, and then they have to sign for them. In addition, we can put memorandums, training. It's a pretty robust program that's, most of the law enforcement agencies around here are starting to use, and it's a component for eventually the main law enforcement accreditation program. The other thing that it helps us with is, for the city, is it's paperless. The other thing that we've been working on is the external vest carriers. These are the ones that you wear on the outside of uniform instead of underneath. There was a study done by the University of Wisconsin at Eau Claire, where the kinesiology department looked at how people wear their equipment, and it came out that, for your back and your hips down the road, that these external carriers are, ergonomically, are kind of the way to go. So, you're starting to see more and more agencies around the country switch to this. It's not just because they want to look good, or, well, it's, there's actually some science behind it. The other thing that helps us out is there's the Bulletproof Vest Partnership. This is a federal program where every year we go in and we look at how many pieces of body armor are going to expire, or how many we're going to need, and then based on that need, we can put in for this program. We've been very successful over the last couple of years. This pays for half of the cost of body armor. Some other things we've done from community outreach, if you look at the National Night Out, that's been very, very successful. We also hold the Citizens Police Academy. In addition, Socks for Seniors, we take part in Coffee with a Cop. We have an honor guard that takes part in parades and other events in the community. And then, coming up on April 27th, is the Drug Tape Act. Additional accomplishments, we did hire some positions, these are civilian positions. The first one was the parking enforcement officer. That has, I'll talk about that in just a minute. The criminal investigation support person was hired very recently. That is proving already very, a very good thing for us. We also have officers that are assigned to the Southern Maine Special Response Team. This is a tactical unit that's a regional team. We have one officer who's on the tactical side, and then we have three people that are assigned as negotiators. So, in the event of any type of a major incident in Southern Maine, we would be part of that response. We also, as you can see up the picture up on there, we changed the design in our police cars. We are now with a local company for our lettering. We think it looks good. The other addition you see on the front of the police cars, that push bumper, it's not actually for pushing cars, it's really more of a mounting platform. But if you can see on the side, you'll see that there's some LED lights that blink out to the side, there's some in that crossbar, and then the siren is actually mounted, you barely see it, but the siren's mounted out front. Before, when we used to get our cars outfitted, they had to pull that entire plastic bumper cover off in order to get into the lights, to put corner lights, lights in the grill, and then the siren back there. So, we purchased these push bumpers, and actually, that's going to reduce our costs. They don't have to pull off that bumper cover anymore. So, when it comes to outfitting the vehicles, we're going to save time and money, because these things just bolt right in, and they're kind of like a plug-and-play, if you will. The next thing, we always take care, take advantage of any grants. The grants, unfortunately, around the country, if you look at the Homeland Security stuff, the grants are starting to diminish. However, we do take advantage of the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. That purchase, last year, we purchased some of the lockable cargo boxes for the back of these police cars to put equipment. We also purchased for the J-Mar, which is the traffic study thing that we have, we bought an additional one and upgraded the current one, and then on top of that, the electronic control device or the tasers, we're able to buy those off of that grant. And then you'll see Firehouse Subs. So, we worked, there were several of us, including Sergeant Ken Foss, who's here tonight, that worked together on this. Firehouse Subs does a lot with local police, fire, EMS. We submitted a grant because our automated external defibrillators were coming to end of life, and we put in for the grant, we were successful, and we've replaced all of our AEDs with brand-new equipment. And then, of course, I want to give credit to Emily Roy. Emily helped us, obviously, with the website updates. She's also been helping us with some promotional things for hiring that have been very, very successful, we're very happy with it. And then, most recently, you'll see that the daily logs have been going on there in a kind of a new format, it shows everything we're doing, from car stops, everything that's, that we're doing. Looking at the RAD that we had for 2019, if you look at that, you'll see that we hired the parking enforcement officer. What I want to draw your attention to is that, from May of 2018 until November of 2018, we wrote 134 parking tickets. So, that's the busy season, and that's what the patrol officers, when they weren't assigned to calls or doing something else, that's how many tickets they wrote. We've since hired a great young man, who's come on board, really taken ownership in this program. He's written 358 over the winter. So, now, that 358 includes some patrol officers writing tickets, but he's out there every day on Main Street. So, that, I think, has been great. If you look at the revenue, the revenue has gone up over 10,000 compared to what it was before. So, I think this is a win-win, and we haven't even seen the busy season yet. These are some of our major challenges that we looked at as an organization. Opiates, arrest and booking time, the mandatory training requirements, one of them had a little bit washed out, which is the documentation time that we have on reports, city growth, and then the number of officers that we need on calls for service. I'd like to touch on each one of these real quick. The first one, the opioid concerns. Anytime we have to go on one of these calls, a lot of times, these people have overdosed, and so we have to administer naloxone. A lot of times, we have to begin CPR before the fire department gets to where, we're usually the first ones to get there, and we also oftentimes have to use the AED. Another thing that's come up recently, when you look at the York County Jail, anytime we're going to make an arrest, if somebody has had naloxone administered to them, we cannot take them and book them until we have sat with them at the hospital for four hours and had a doctor watch, watch over them. We had a presentation by the York County Jail, the half-life on fentanyl and car fentanyl is a lot longer than the naloxone will last. So, what they're seeing is, unfortunately, is these folks go to the hospital, they're there for two or three hours, they walk out the door, and they drop, and we get another phone call, and we have to go and give them another dose of naloxone. So, if we arrest somebody that's had naloxone given to them, we own that person for four hours at the hospital. That's not including the call, booking, or anything else, that's just sitting with them at the hospital. The other thing we, obviously, every law enforcement agency deals with is their arrest and booking times. If you look at a typical OUI arrest, that's usually two hours, if we don't have to take them to the county jail, sometimes three. Domestic violence arrests, same thing, those, these are multiple officer calls. If we have to deal with a combative prisoner that has to go to York County Jail, that usually requires two officer transport. So, depending on the time of day, if it's during the day, it's a lot longer drive. If it's on third shift and it's dark out, then we do a little bit better, but we still have to drive down to Alfred. Mandatory training requirements, as you all know, I think everybody here can understand that law enforcement is not what it used to be. I think most people remember the picture that used to hang up everywhere with the Massachusetts State Police Trooper talking to the young man who ran away, and that's kind of what people remember, that Norman Rockwell painting. Unfortunately, there's a number of things that have happened in history that have changed what we do. The first thing was active assailant, the Columbine incident, which we're coming up on the 20th anniversary. That changed law enforcement. Prior to that, those things were SWAT, we surrounded the place and waited. Now, that's no longer acceptable. So, that's why you see officers, we now have rifles in the patrol cars, and we have additional training that we have to do every year. So, every year in the summer, that's a week's worth of training we have to set up, and it's a full day of training for every officer, but we set aside a week to get everybody through. Then, of course, 9/11 changed things. Crisis intervention training was another thing. Now that other areas of government have kind of shrunk a little bit, a lot of times, those burdens fall on law enforcement or fire EMS. So, all of our officers have had to go to CIT training, so that they can deal with people that are in some type of distress. And then, on top of that, as I talked about earlier, it's kind of like we have to deal with the medical training now, too. So, now we're getting training on trauma and casualty care, which is stopping bleeding, it's putting on tourniquets, it's CPR, it's the AED, the administration of naloxone, those types of things. All those things are additional training, on top of the annual training that's required by the academy. Documentation, we read several articles in some of the law enforcement periodicals about the time that's being spent nationwide on writing reports, and how much time people are off the road. So, in order to see how we were doing, we kind of conducted a little study. It's not scientific, but we created a special code in our CAD system. If an officer comes in to write a report, we're not talking about an arrest, because they can do that while they're in the booking process, but just... they can do that while they're in the booking process, but just somebody calls up and says their car got broken into, whatever the case may be. We did that for 139 days, and we're averaging 6.35 hours a day. So if you factor in that an officer gets lunch and everything else, that's one officer in a 24-hour period that's not on the road, if you put it all together. Every officer, when they show up on a call now, the documentation demands are they want everybody to write a report, so you're having to come in and type these reports. And kind of our little, our little in-house study has fallen in line with what we're seeing in a national trend. And then of course, we have three officers and one sergeant per shift. So you start taking people off the road, you can see what kind of position we're in. Next, we talk about city growth. I don't really want to hit on that too much. You're all well aware of the growth that's going on within the community, which is pretty significant. It's a good thing, but with that growth and the number of people moving here, there are demands that are placed on, on law enforcement. I've already talked about the number of officers on calls, kind of to give you a quick touch on serious injury or fatal accidents. So if we have a bad accident on Route 1, that pretty much takes the, everybody who's working to go out, kind of seal that off. Usually it's about two hours to reconstruct that, but then 40 hours, actual 40 hours in front of the computer doing the math and the mapping and everything to get that thing done. So there's a lot that goes into that. And then of course, as I discussed earlier, the calls are, it's just becoming one of those things now, more and more officers are needed on some of these calls. This is just a quick look at our, at our budget. You can see the breakdown. If you have any questions on that, I can touch on that. This is what, kind of our summary. We've asked, there's two RADS we're looking at. One RAD is personnel, the other one is technology, and I'll touch on those in a minute. So where are you going to see the budget increase for the police department? Obviously, we have the contractual obligations through collective bargaining. One of the things that I could tell you we were very shocked with was the cost of the police cars. We found out after one of our adjoining communities had gone through the process to buy new police cars, and the 2020 model year, which is brand new, totally redesigned, went up about $7,500 per car, which is a big jump over what we were used to. It was usually hundreds of dollars, but it's gone up. They're telling us 7,500. We're hoping that the equipment that's in the current cars will still fit in the new design. We're being told that they, that they're looking at some retrofit kits, but I can't guarantee you that the cost of equipment isn't going to factor in on this. The next thing is as the community grows, obviously the PISA that answers our 911 calls, as the city population grows, so does that cost. So that's gone up over $7,000 a year. And then finally, the Maine Criminal Justice Academy hasn't had any kind of rate increases since I believe 2011, and they finally are going up. Typically, we pay now $2,500 to send somebody to the 18-week academy. That's going to go up to 3,000, and then there are going to be some increases to training. Those are more minor. Looking at the budget, I feel comfortable that we're not asking for any more money in that area that we can absorb that. Areas for savings, so if I could give some props to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
May I just ask one question?
Okay, yes.
Sure. What is PISA?
That's the Public Safety Answering Point, so there's only-
Public Safety?
Public Safety Answering Point, that's the 911 call center. Areas for savings, if I could give credit to our public work folks, they do a very good job maintaining our vehicles. We've looked at that over the last two or three years. So we've decreased that line by 5,000. Don Roth and his crew came in, by hiring them and the way that they're purchasing supplies and everything, we've cut that budget by 2,460. And then we had our boilers last year were replaced and they went to natural gas, much more efficient. So we're taking some money out of that line because we don't think we're going to need Request above directive, so what I came up here today to talk to you about is two things, one of them being personnel. If you could go to the next slide, sir. So the Saukco Police Department currently has 36 sworn police officers. As you can see on here, the population since 2000, which is, we haven't grown in patrol since 2000. The city population's gone up just under 16%. Our patrol staffing level has stayed flat. So that begs the question, how many police officers do we really need? So I've done a little bit of research on this. There's a number of folks out there that are profess to be experts on this. I am not one of them, I will tell you that. But looking at everything that there is out there, these are the things that people look at. They look at crime trends. The most popular is the officer to population ratio because that's quick math. Minimum Manning levels, the authorized or budgeted approach, which is basically what can I afford? Workload-based, that is what do we actually need? What's our demand on the police? And then geography. So the big question is which one's best? Well, we kind of looked at all of these. You go ahead, sir. So we looked at all of these. So if you look at the national standards, which every 10 years or so, the FBI through the uniform crime reporting does, they look at all these different numbers. One of them is police officers to 1,000 permanent population. They look at how many employees, that type of thing. The latest one, the average is actually 2.4 sworn officers per 1,000 permanent population. That's the national standard. And then the number for everybody, that's your civilian and sworn, is 3.4 per 1,000. That would put us pretty high. So we looked at, just to pick a number, we picked two because that's when I look at the numbers, there's a lot of communities that are right around that ballpark area. So two officers, if you look at the population of Saukco, it's probably hovering around 20,000. That would be 40 police officers. Then you get to look at, as I talked about earlier, calls that require multiple officers, traffic accidents, that type of thing. But really, the biggest thing I think that we looked at was, what's the community want from their police department? What's the demand? Because we want to maintain the same level of service that the community's become accustomed to. So if you look at just, we pulled out speed details. So we've had speed detail complaints. 13 of those were in wards one, two, and three, and we're just not getting out there. We're with the calls for service and the report writing and all these other things that come up, we really are not getting to where we need to be. A big concern for us obviously is North Saukco. That area is growing. Every time we get an officer that starts to go out there, there's a call that'll happen more in town, they've got to turn around and come back as the backup officer or to help out. Obviously, you know about the growth up on Route 1. And then one of the things we're looking at is because of that growth, we'd like to add a fourth patrol zone. Right now, we have three. We'd like to add a fourth one. We think that would give us better coverage. Under a fourth patrol zone model, instead of having three officers and a supervisor working, the minimum staffing, we go to four officers and a supervisor. Then the final thing is we have some technology in the police cars. It's coming up on end of life. And again, we have to go back to what the FBI for CEGIS compliance, that's Criminal Justice Information System, we have to follow their rules. When some of this stuff comes to the end of life or end of support, in order to maintain compliance, we have to buy new equipment. That's, I believe that's about $12,800. Couple of things that would come with that. Number one, it would give us internet access, restricted of course, to law enforcement stuff, but that would give officers the ability to look at power DMS if they had a question about policies. We'd be able to use the screen state technology, which we set that up in the cars, and when you reach a certain speed, the screen blanks out so that they're not looking at the computer while they're driving. And then we can look at state law, anything that the city has on their website as far as ordinances, and email. And then we can, we are, they already doing the reports in the cars, but I think with that internet access, it'd be a little more robust. That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Just a moment, chief. Any questions to my right? Seeing none. Questions to my left? Seeing none. Apparently you gave a very thorough pre, oh, Mr. Sutherland.
I just, and to point to the council and the public, part of the recommended budget includes two of those officers. Obviously, the police department is requesting four, and I'm not sure if you can talk to what two would do for you versus four.
Well, any, any additional police officers is going to help us out as far as adding more people to the shift. It would not be what four would do, but we'll certainly utilize two if we get them.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to go to the four quadrant shift?
We would not be able to go to four zones. And then I hesitate to compare ourselves to our neighbors, but sometimes I get asked, what are your neighbors doing? So Bitterford has 53 sworn positions for a population of a little over 22,000, almost 23 probably. Scarborough is, I think, neck and neck with us on population, and they currently have 40 sworn.
Right, so, and you've got five detectives?
Well, right now, actually we don't.
Oh, you had, you had one attrition loss recently?
Correct. Because of a resignation, somebody went on to greener pastures, got a better job in the private sector, and then because of the vacancy which we have, we had to pull the detective out of main drug enforcement. So right now, I currently have two detectives and a detective sergeant.
Oh, okay. But with two additional officers, it would be one per shift for the first and second shifts?
We would look at something like that, yes, sir.
Which are the busier shifts?
Actually, when we looked at our numbers statistically, all three shifts are pretty much in line. It's pretty much a third. Because the folks that work the third shift, they're busy out doing building checks, really checking those things at night, making sure people aren't breaking into things.
How would you, you operate with three shifts. How would you deploy four officers? That seems logical. We could understand one per shift. There's a fourth officer that is more of a float?
We would, we could look at that person. They used to have a thing called E-Group, which was an additional officer to, to fill in, like in an overlap position, so we could look at that. But I'll be honest with you, at any given time, we have people that are either in training, are out with injuries, you know, that type of thing. So statistically, you know, if you look at, I think, any organization, somewhere between 15, 15 and 30% of your workforce at any given time is sick, vacation, injured. So that fourth officer would fill that hole.
Okay, thank you. Again, any questions to my right? Seeing none. Any questions to my left? Seeing none. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the Planning and Development Department's presentation. Ms. Clavett.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Here this evening, I want to introduce a couple of folks, but one will be joining us. Emily Cole Prescott, our city planner is going to be here this evening as well, but she's running the planning board meeting downstairs, so depending on when she arrives. Also have Betty Brunswick, who's the chair of our Economic Development Commission, and she will be speaking as well. Again, thank you for allowing me to present the budget. You'll see our organizational chart. Director of Planning and Development, we have an administrative assistant, which is Maggie, but Maggie will be retiring in the middle of June, and we're replacing that position with a program coordinator. That position has just been officially filled, and that's Kim Sawyer, who is currently in finance, and she'll be moving over to the program coordinator position. Happy to have her. City planner again is Emily Cole Prescott, and we are hiring the business development specialist because Emily filled the city planner role, so that position is vacant. Planning and Development partners with those who choose to live, work, and locate here in Saukco through the delivery of excellent and timely service and plans for the future while preserving, enhancing a superior quality of life. We're responsible for business advocacy, business retention and attraction with a goal to create a vibrant and healthy economic climate, working in conjunction with the Economic Development Commission, which is a city council-appointed board. The department also oversees planning progress and process, working not only with the planning board, but collaborating with city staff and regional partners to uphold a fair and transparent process. We're responsible for economic and community development, for planning, and also historic preservation falls under our reign. Next slide, what I thought I'd do is tie into four of your eight city council goals are basically tied into what we do for our department. You have goals four, five, six, and seven, which are related to us. One is to amend policy on TIFs and CZs. Here's, right now, we, we haven't amended the policy, but what we've done is completed an entire TIF analysis, TIF amendment process. Once that is completed, we will revise the policy. Contract zones, we did a complete assessment and analysis. That's undergoing with the zoning ordinance revision to see how that's going to unfold. Goal five is to consider a business park, a new one, to create infrastructure that attracts, retains business. Happy to tell you, you folks approved it. We have parcels, the Claire parcels that have been purchased. We're awaiting the outcomes of the Economic Development Administration grant to see about getting a road to, to go into that park, and stay tuned for the next steps on that one. Goal six, bring natural gas to the Millbrook Business Park. That has been accomplished. Route 1 North Corridor, if I'm not mistaken, begins this week, and so that's going to be ongoing. And goal seven, we're continuing to work collaboratively with Saukco Main Street to expand and promote downtown Saukco. The next slide shows our FY19 goals and initiatives, and primarily, we've been a department in transition. I started in the middle of June, and we've had staff, new staff hired over the course of the year. We've completed a comprehensive TIF assessment, analysis, and realignment. We're undergoing the zoning ordinance revision, contract zone analysis process. We're working hard on business retention, expansion, attraction, and business parks, and we've succeeded in doing a better job at streamlining planning and development inquiry and review process. Our goals for FY20 include focusing more heavily on business retention and expansion, looking at business attraction and business park development. A very high need from a lot of the businesses that have reported back to us is workforce development. And then of course, with the zoning ordinance revision, we have to implement it, so that's one of our goals. And we look forward to beginning the process for the comp plan 2021. So just a quick report back on our accomplishments and deliverables before we get into the budget. Again, as stated, we talked about the comprehensive TIF assessment, analysis, and realignment. We worked on aligning those with the city core objectives for tax base and job growth, workforce development, economic diversification, placemaking, community, and downtown development. And as you saw, as we worked through the TIF amendments, the shift of the focus of the TIFs went from business incentives, not that we're not doing them, but the shift shifted from there to public infrastructure and utilizing TIF funds, hopefully this coming year, to fund municipal and other projects to support economic development. What were the outcomes? We've amended seven TIF districts that are up in Augusta for approval. We've created one new TIF district, Ready Seafood. We've developed two new credit enhancement agreements, which are Ready Seafood and Precision Manufacturing. And two new CEAs are currently in the pipeline and under the initial stages for review. Under the zoning ordinance revision, again, the zoning ordinance revision, primarily the process was to make the ZO much more user-friendly, to edit it, streamline it, to recommend merging some zoning districts, and to propose changes to the uses allowed in different areas of town, and to ensure the application procedures were clear and straightforward. Where are we today? Contract zone assessment has been conducted, and it's being incorporated in the review right now. We've had extensive public engagement, which will continue. We will have several public hearings coming up, and we anticipate the completion in August of 2019. Under business development, expansion, and attraction, we have been working on communications, connections, and collaboration. Lots of folks use us as the one-stop shop. We'll call the office, and we put them in places where they can connect with developers and property owners. And again, the focus on business industrial parks. Where are we today? We've assisted over 50 businesses in the last several months with development and permitting needs. We've brought seven new businesses to Ready Seafood, to Saukco, which include Ready Seafood, Convenient MD, Hancock Lumber, Precision Manufacturing, Ashley Loren Designs, Cunningham Prosthetic Care and Athletics. And when you think about the last nine, 10 months, that's a really huge increase in the business tax base here in Saukco. We've closed on three lots in Millbrook that were in the, in the pipeline, and we have one additional lot currently under contract. That leaves us with two lots left to sell, which are lots one and two. Next, for streamlining the planning and development review process, we are working on information retrieval and documentation. Right now, take a look backstage, see all those boxes? There's some boxes back there. There are files everywhere. So we're working on streamlining that and trying to get a lot of that on electronic level. Working on an internal review process and ordinances that help govern our development. What are our outcomes to date? Again, as stated, we're doing business development and permitting work for over 50 projects. It ranges from small residential to large developments and expansions. We've established for the first time what we call a Planning and Development Review Committee, which is a formal internal team of city staff that reviews the projects from inception to completion. team of city staff that reviews the projects from inception to completion. And we're working on a continual process improvements to better integrate city interdepartmental resources. Where are we to date with our FY19 RADS? Again, I inherited these, so I'm reporting out on what was done to date. The admin desk scanner is ordered, and we're working with that. Professional services, the cost of the ordinance revision, which is currently underway. Public info station, we're researching our best options for that. And the Green Belt GIS map, the city planner is working with our new GIS engineering technician and Parks and Recreation Director to meet with the Conservation Commission on April 22nd to move that project forward. Next slide, our budget summary. As with a lot of the departments, base pay, your salaries are the predominant, and you look at the contractual and all of these other programs. But I'd like to jump right ahead to where all of the costs are and to talk about our TIF program. So, under the general fund development, the general fund budget request, you also have a backup, because one of the original document that was approved by the Economic Development Commission, full support of that, has a couple of changes, and those are all, those are bringing in under the fold of the Economic Development Department, is what it looks like to support economic development-related public entities. So personnel is a lot of our cost. It's about $269,000. Our operations, materials, and supplies, $50,000, $450,000. Contractual services, we're asking for a reduction, and again, that's a line that we inherited and we're working on. Some of that includes escrow accounts and other accounts, so that's all of that. The supported entities, again, like I stated, are in different parts of your budget, city budget. Those are our supported entities for the city. So our total actually is a reduction of $54,398. The next slide shows the supporting entities that we're talking about. The HPC would come in at the same. Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission has proposed an increase, so we've basically put that in. Southern Maine Finance Authority, again, there's an asterisk there. It looks like $15,000, but last year's line item combined Chamber plus that, so I just wanted to report it out so it looked consistent. But Southern Maine Finance Agency is only $9,000. Economic Development Commission last year had $10,000. We have not spent that down. Looking for $1,000, which is basically operational expenses. You'll see in the TIF fund, some of their projects and initiatives funded underneath that. Chamber dues are currently at $5,000. They are asking for $10,000, and so that has been reflected in there, and that represents that particular line item. So I'll have Betty come up and talk about her request above directive. The program coordinator is $2,000. That's just to adjust the salary for increased responsibilities. And I'll have Betty talk to the Rad about using economic development funds for operations, because that's a slight deviation from what the Economic Development Commission had approved.
Okay, so when the Economic Development Commission met and we went over, and I think you have these separately?
Yes.
The Saco TIF and Economic Development Fund sheet. We went over these, and essentially, these are allocated based upon where we'd seen the needs, gone through a process, and delegated them in order of some priority. What I love about this budget is that it really tells a story of where Saco is headed and how we really want to put these TIF funds to use for our city. In the past, the Economic Development Department was funded through these TIFs. I don't believe that that's a good use of these funds anymore, if you can see what the usage is planned for. I think it would be good to get into the habit of planning for personnel in our general budget. There is a discrepancy of about $187,000 that really, I don't support being used. And I would like Denise to talk a little bit more about that.
If I may, just touch on it?
Sure.
So you'll notice there's $187,000 where I was looking to use economic development funds to offset this budget for the time being. When I got, I support, when Denise came on board, she convinced me that it was most appropriate for staff and operations to be paid for out of the general fund related to it, therefore giving you additional resources to pay for one-time needs and capital planning programming. Our Economic Development Fund is typically used for the purchase and sale of land for the council. However, it currently is a little more robust, and I was really concerned, when I started looking at all of the numbers, I was really concerned about the mill rate on the general fund. And so I thought, while the Economic Development Commission supported a particular budget, when I looked at all of the numbers, I was a little too concerned about where things stood, and I looked to, I guess, raid a little bit of this fund to cover those department needs another year. I don't think Denise or Betty support that, but I was just looking at where could I, where could I keep the mill rate from going up further? And this is one of the areas. I don't think this is a long-term solution. At some point, the council will have to make a decision about the staffing of economic and planning and economic development and make a hard stance about where they want to see that paid for. I do believe it should be out of the general fund, but I just couldn't, at this time, put it there. So it'll be something that we'll talk about further over the next couple of weeks or even tonight, so.
So I'll get to the details as we get further down, but I just wanted to, at this point, address that particular slide that shows the use of the, what was originally requested, and the city administrator has proposed that we continue using economic development funds. But you will see, from our perspective, meaning mine, and the Economic Development Commission's perspective, is the long-term solvency and the use of that fund, it's not recommended that that happens, primarily because it's not going to be there. And so if the goal is to use that for grant matches and for funding land acquisition and land improvements, and that goes away because it's funding 40% of our operations, that's a council decision to be made. And you have to weigh that in priorities to anything from new positions to other changes that are recommended in this total budget. But let's move forward. And let's, just a quick reminder for the public and for the council, that for every TIF, every new dollar that's in a TIF district, you're at 45% loss revenue to increase county taxes, to reduce subsidies for revenue sharing. The calculations now show it's about at 48%. So let's do easy math. For every dollar that comes in, for every new business generated, you're losing 50 cents on a dollar. So it behooves you to continue to utilize TIF funds for economic development or type projects, public infrastructure projects, that would actually cost you double if it came out of the general fund. So I just wanted to remind folks about that new valuation and what that looks like as we review our TIF budget. So the next, you can skip over to the next slide. And we put it in a pretty little slide, and I'm not going to go through all of the math on this. But bottom line, if you look at the projected beginning balance, and again, there's a little caveat you'll see later, that may change depending on what that actually looks like. But our projected beginning balance of all the TIFs is $4,617,000. A projected budget is 3.5. Does that sound a lot? Sure. But when I start showing you what it's paying for, you would be surprised at what that's going to benefit the taxpayers by not taking it out of the general fund. Our projected ending balance, as we spend that down, is a little over a million, with our projected growth about 1.3, making it, by the beginning of FY21, about a $2.4 million beginning balance. So as we go to the next slide, and your backup is this sheet, which is a little small, but I'll reprint it for you folks on a eight and a half by 14, because it's a little bit more legible. Fire station land acquisition, that was built into the TIF programs, even if the ones that are up in Augusta will be approved, hopefully, in the next two to three months. But even without two or three of the TIF districts already have a fire station in there. So buying that property to the tune of about $400,000, you would have had to have generated $800,000 of general fund tax revenue to pay for that land. So it behooves you to use the tax increment financing districts to pay for that. Legal fees, we're going to be starting our signage, business signage gateway, signage process throughout the entire city. You've seen a couple of funds. We're going to be putting some money aside for that. So all of the new signs throughout of Saco, you would have had to have put that in the general fund if you want to fund that initiative. It's actually built into the TIF programs and can be paid out of TIFs. We've heard very loud and clear, whether it's from Ready Seafood, Hancock Lumber, any of these businesses, the business that's just moving out of town, unfortunately, that workforce development is a big piece of the puzzle that hasn't been solved. So basically, funding parts of those initiatives. Putting in, finally, industrial park sidewalks, and then the zoning ordinance will need map revisions and overlays done. The TIF can pay for the portion that's business-related, so we can pay for about 50% of that. Next slide, out of 77 Industrial Park Road, that is essentially going to be business retention, attraction, and trade shows, that sort of thing, so we can get ourselves outside the state of Maine and bringing in businesses from outside Maine. Our focus is not to poach from Scarborough, from Bitterford, from Portland, from Kittery or even northern Maine. It's to get folks from outside the state to locate here in Maine. Spring Hill Road, we'll be paying for land acquisition for the lots that are near the new Public Works Building, doing the site engineering, development lots, the road construction for both Public Works Building and the new development lots. Again, the original budget that was approved by the Economic Development Commission included paying for a Public Works bond to the tune of $250,000. Subsequent to putting that in, we have determined with the attorneys in the state that the Public Works bond cannot be funded out of TIFs. So in essence, instead of redoing the capital program, shuttle bus Zoom will be paid for out of the TIF districts, and that is a built-in approved cost. And we will be paying for $110,000 of approximately the $360,000 for the general bond, general obligation bond, a prorated amount for the city. We will be building in every year, paying the sewer bond payment, and that is an approved use of TIF districts as well. Moving forward to Spring Hill, again, business attraction, that'll be the marketing for the city. Park North will be paying for the flag pond, signal, and intersection. Please note, it's not just specifically for the signal. It also includes intersection improvements, turn lanes, whatever needs to happen, and another contribution toward the zoning ordinance map, GIS, and overlays. Skipping on over to Saco Island Mill Four, that generates a little bit less cash. We'll be pulling the Chamber dues out of that. And then the downtown, because of the changes, it will be able to generate more. We still have one additional year of the grants, the grant commitment to the Cuts Ave project to the tune of 212. Proposing to fund Saco Main Street used to be funded out of the Economic Development Fund, now would come out of the TIFs. The facade improvement grant program, we would like to initiate for the downtown, and we'd like to assist businesses in, to retain their businesses. And that could be whatever that may look like for grants that they need. The Economic Development Fund project program, Betty talked a little bit about that. The beginning balance, you can shift to the next slide. Kevin, thank you. Has about $615,000. The proposed budget is $250,000, which included the Claire parcel development. And the ending balance was $365,000, but that is before the proposed $187,000 to come out of that. If that $187,000 comes out of that, that leaves us with $177,853, with a projected income of about $130,000 from the sale of Lot Four, but that is not a guarantee. We're hoping that that sells. But in my opinion, and the board's opinion, the commission's opinion, that that leaves that at a very, very low level going into next year for grant matches for anything. So I'd like to conclude with that, and do you have any questions? Although I just know that I may not have done a thorough presentation, because if there are questions, the police department did a better job than I did.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to my right? Any to my left? Yes, Counselor Mentorm, and then Counselor Johnston.
Couple things. Have these numbers captured the credit enhancement revenue that's coming in?
They have.
Okay. Secondly, we have a $25,000 Rad to fully fund shuttle bus. Are any of the other TIF districts able to accommodate that? Because I know the one that it's currently funded from doesn't have a sufficient balance to make that extra 25 up.
That one has been built into downtown. It's built into several accounts, and assuming all the others get approved, it could be, but at least the downtown is definitely covered as of now. So the $25,000 could come from the downtown and not the general fund. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
That's not a question, it's a comment. I'd just like to say thank you to you and your staff. This is the level of detail and budgeting that I've been waiting for for six years, so very pleased with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Counselor Doyle. Thank you. So this, in this entire budget, going through the budget presentations, we're seeing a lot of added positions, but yet we're not funding our economic development program through the general fund. And that is leading us down the road of not being sustainable in the economic development fund. Is that what your presentation is telling us?
I'm all for 100% transparency and the cost of doing business. And if it's all out of the general fund, and it shows in one area exactly what it costs to do planning in the city of Saco, exactly what it costs for doing economic development in Saco, I'm all for that. Now, if you want to pay it out of TIFs in different areas, that's fine, but I do believe that your economic development fund, unless you keep adding money to it, you're not going to sell enough lots to keep that going long-term. Your $187,000 is fine this year, but let's say that there's a grant we write for something, or the grant match for the land, for the road, is higher than the $200,000 we have built into the TIFs, we're in trouble. We have to come back with a Rad.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this council either approved or heard or discussed a, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, about a double booking in the TIFs, and we had to fix that error? Is that correct?
Well, what happened is, it was proposed, this is before I got here, it was proposed that $184,000, $187,000 come out of the downtown TIF, but it had also been booked to commit to $212,000 for the Cuts Ave project, and you can't do both. And there was not enough money coming into that account. So you folks approved what I call a realignment, or what finance called a realignment, to be able to make sure that, yeah, it was inadvertently double-booked.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? And to my left, Counselor Copeland?
I have one quick question about the workforce development programs and training, $50,000. What would that, what is that $50,000 going to do?
So for right now, it's an earmark. Anything that you see there in the TIF, and thank you for the question, Lynn, because it just, everything here is an earmark. You know, it may not cost $50,000, but we want to get with folks at the state level that are very much invested and involved in workforce development. What does that look like? Does that fund studies? Does it fund a group of folks that are able to really research this? Does it involve research? We're not, we don't know right now. And so that's part of what the workforce development initiative that the Economic Development Commission is going to be looking at this entire year. So it's like earmarking that funding to have that capability of investing in workforce development. Right now, we currently have a group that's meeting on a monthly basis that's led by the Chamber. It has about 30 stakeholders from various nonprofits, from the Technical College to UNE, to folks from the vocational school and all that are involved in that. And there's no funding for them at all. So it'll involve all of that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions to my left? Mr. Sutherland?
Mr. Sutherland?
I'll offer to Councilor Doyle first.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't know you had an issue question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I get a copy of the job description for both the--
Program coordinator.
Administrative assistant and the new program coordinator?
Sure.
So we can compare, and I'm sure all the council would like to see that comparison of that. And the other thing was, how does the overall budget as we stand now fall into the directive that was set by the council of contractual obligations and 1.9% above the contractual obligations? How are we sitting on that? Because we're talking a lot about the mill rate calculator. And the mill rate calculator is fictitious in the sense that it's not an actual number because we don't set it, we set expenses. That's what we do as the city council, as we've been told time and again. So working with this mill rate calculator, it's nice to see what some of the stuff can do, but it's a fictitious number because if the evaluations come in higher, the assessor can say, hey, we can leave the mill rate right where it is. So my question is, where do we sit in that directive that was, I believe, agreed upon by this council of 1.9% above the contractual obligations?
It is the column called council directive in your budget book. If you were to, in the mill rate calculator, if you were to go to every single one of the yes, no's that the administrator had put a yes in, and you were to change that to no, that would give you exactly the directive that was given to council.
Thank you.
Yes, to provide a little bit more clarification, if the number that you're interested in is the total budgeted expenses in the directive as opposed to the associated mill rate, that's the second row down at the top of the mill rate calculator. And as you approve or don't approve the various RADS down below, that budgeted expense number as selected will change. So you can compare where you've arrived at versus the directive budget. So the directive budget that we put together based on the council directive is a total budgeted expenses of $28,214,319 with budgeted revenues excluding taxes, homestead, and bedding of $9,810,915. And then there are various changes to both revenues and expenses in the mill rate calculator. And as you choose to approve or not approve, the 2020 as selected portion also has a budgeted expenses and budgeted revenues number. So you can see how all of those changes will affect those totals.
Thank you.
Just again, any additional questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Any questions to my right? Mr. Sutherland?
And I'll just say, if resources don't get spent out of a TIF, let's say we look to develop a workforce development program and it ends up costing us $30,000 or $25,000, the rest of those resources fall straight back into that TIF, into that revenue stream. So it'll be there for future years, for future projects or future programs we would look to create. I think we were just putting in some placeholders and some ideas about what we could use these resources for. And again, within the letter of the law, because there are limitations of what we can use TIF dollars for.
The goal with developing these TIF programs is to understand that what it can fund, how much it can fund, and long-term sustainability of that funding. And so for every dollar not spent is a dollar that remains in that account. And the goal is to just earmark it so that we make sure that we have enough moving forward. It doesn't mean we're spending 100% of that. And we will report back on a quarterly basis how we're doing with this TIF budget.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments from my right to my left? Thank you very much, Ms. Clever.
You're welcome.
And next, Mr. DeJardin. There you go. Hey.
I don't want to talk too close.
Oh, no, you want to be able to be heard, so you've got to speak--
I've got to find that perfect.
You have to speak clearly enough to be heard all across the city.
All right, all across the city, not just in this room, all across the city.
All across the city.
First, I want to thank you for having me serve as your new assessor here. This is my first time going through this process. Last time I was up here was in July, I was being sworn in, so I appreciate that. So when we look at our assessing department, we look at what we do as assessors, our mission is to assess the city of Saco fairly and equitably while providing excellence in public service by identifying and uniformly assessing property within the city of Saco in compliance with state laws using acceptable mass appraisal principles to create and maintain accurate parcel maps using, used to provide geographical data analysis to efficiently provide the public with high-quality products and services created in a supportive work environment encouraging cooperation, honesty, integrity, and respect. Basically, we value all the real estate parcels, so every parcel of land with improvements on, we put a value on those. All the personal property, the business equipment that businesses use, they declare their tangible equipment to us, we assess it, depreciate it, come up with values on that. And also the, like I touched, the maps, you know, every parcel has a unique map and lawn identifier, so they're all separated based on a deed description. When we look at our organizational chart, three out of those four different positions have changed over the last year. We've gone through a lot of turnover in the department. You see me as a tax assessor and the personal property lister as .5. That's because we're shared with Biddeford. So we share those responsibilities with a full-time deputy assessor and a full-time new administrative listing assistant. So with my nine months of being here so far, I look at, you know, what we've accomplished. Basically, two, we went through a period of time with not having enough employees, so we've actually in February hired two new employees. One, the lister that works here part-time, and the listing assistant that is here full-time. We feel like we, you know, we did a good job with those employees we've hired. You know, it was more important to us and more important to the city of Saco to find the right individuals that we think that are going to be here and that are going to, we're going to be able to train and really create a good structure in our department, which, you know, it's what we're working towards. Also, the, you know, we talk here about scanning, you know, we deal with a lot of transfers and deeds, all kinds. There can be so many deeds and transfers on a specific property. So we're really working on taking all that and putting it in our associated documents section of our vision, our assessment software, so that we don't have to have all, you know, have piles and piles of stuff in the annex every time we have to go look at an old deed or whatnot. I'm also really, I've talked to Kevin about this, about really kind of creating a nice procedure for how we really work the department and structure the department. So I've really worked on our SharePoint website to really kind of set procedures. And I think by doing that, it's ultimately going to be a good guide for our new employees to really train them properly. So I'd look at that as our, you know, so far as our accomplishments. So we look at RADS and we look at, what we've done is we've implemented a new software. We had a 6.5 Vision software and we had to upgrade to A. Basically, most assessors, I think all of them eventually, are going to have to upgrade to a new software. So we're really in the process of just adjusting with our new software, understanding it. It's formatted a little bit different than our 6.5. So, you know, Vision is doing a better job of doing more updates with this new software so that we can really, one of the reasons why they're doing all these updates is just to, you know, if there's any bugs in the software, because it's a new software, assessors are contacting them and making sure that everything gets cleaned up, so. But in the long run, this new software has a lot more features and it's going to be able to make us do our job more efficient, so. So when I look forward, I look at the big challenges that we have as a department, I think it's pretty well-stated, the growth in Saco, as long as, as far as southern Maine in general. Me and Kate had pulled up about 448 qualified sales in 2018 in Saco. So think about that, you know, think about that, think about that for a second. That's just right there without actually looking at the real estate market and the sales and these-- that number right there just shows the growth. So what I want to do, and what we want to do as a department, is really create a more efficient way to monitor these ratios and these sales. Really, that second bullet point there really kind of explains like what we do as assessors. So when we have a market like we have now, it's really important for us as assessors to really do our due diligence to make sure that we are maintaining equitable ratios with different classes of properties. That's how everybody pays their fair share, that's how, you know, equity is distributed amongst all the taxpayers. The next bullet point is succession planning. So like I mentioned before, we talk about, you know, changing turnover in the department. Also, it must be noted that assessing in the, throughout the state is really seeing like a shortage of individuals who are really, you know, working towards this field. So training and certification, when I look around the state and I look at what we need to do as a field throughout the state is really continue to train new individuals. A lot of existing staff that have been around for a while or have retired. So, and we're seeing more and more of that in the state. We're seeing more individuals that have been around for a while and they're calling it quits. So it's really important to have good succession planning. I really want to, you know, maintain that here, create a good structure here so that we have it, so when we have individuals that move on or retire, then, you know, the transition process is going to be smoother. Also, streamlining our data, kind of, you know, different ways of creating more spreadsheets and things like that to really monitor our ratios and equity better, so. As far as the budget summary is concerned, it's pretty similar to FY '19. The big difference here for request above directive, actually, the one that, there's a $4,000 request above directive that, it's important to the training part. So when I look at all of our budget line items and I look at what's the biggest critical need that we would want as a department is training and certification. We, like you said, like I said earlier, I feel like we've got a couple individuals here. Took a while to get a couple individuals through the hiring process, but that really are interested and learning about this field. And I want to do, as the assessor, I want to do my job by really training them and working with them. If they, you know, I want it to be available to them, that if they want to get their certification or take the courses necessary to further themselves in this field, that, you know, we have, we've got some, enough money in the line item to really have them have that opportunity. It's going to help us as a department grow, so. So assessing currently has two full-time employees, two shared employees with Biddeford, mention that. The department is now fully staffed, so again, that was one of our biggest accomplishments, was really getting that department fully staffed, building that foundation for what we need going forward to improve the department. Really, what we've done with the market is maintaining, like I said, with the market, with all the sales that we've had, with everything that, you know, that's been going on at the market. Now that we have a full staff, we feel like we can take the next steps to really improving the department. We've done a lot of maintaining this year with everything that we've had to, we've gone through with our turnover. But succession planning is key to ensure continuity for the future of the department. We would like to offer our two-staff training, our two-staff training to each certification as a main assessor, and offer education. So it's important to have, you know, good trained staff, good procedures so that we can move forward and run a more efficient department. Don't want to repeat myself too many times.
Okay, no, thank you. Any questions to my right? Yes, Councilor Archer?
Thank you, Nick. I'm looking at the budget under revenue, under land use penalty. I see a significant increase in what we're putting out for fines. Is this because there's an increase of violations or an increase in enforcement in which we're collecting the violations? 2015, 0, 16, 0, 17, 0, 18, 3, 2, 9, 2, fiscal year 2019, $19,005, 26. That's a significant difference? And I was just wondering if it's based on just increase of violations or is it just we're enforcing it more, which we then collect on?
The land use penalty, anything that--
Right, that's--
Depends on the sale.
Yeah, that's, right. That's basically, what that is, is there's specific parcels that are in current use programs like tree growth, farmland, open space. Now, the way the state statutes work with that is if you have a property that's in one of these programs and you take it out of that program because you want to build on that, you actually have to pay a penalty based on state statutes. So that's kind of like, you know--
So it's more of an increase of activity rather than anything else?
It's nothing, it's just can change from year to year, depending. And with all the growth that we've seen, like Ready Seafood, for example, that property was in the current use, so it's, you know--
Okay, so it's more of a one-timer type of thing?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ellis, did you have something to add to that?
No, Councilor Archer summarized it exactly. It can be a big spike one year and then nothing. It simply depends on if a large parcel under one of these land use exemptions has been sold.
So any other questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Councilor Copeland?
Thank you for your presentation. One of the things that we hear from our constituents is about unexpected tax bill increases. And so that's something that we, as a council, have been trying to get a tighter grip on so that we don't have those, you know, people getting $600 and $700 increases and so forth. So I know it's a timing issue, but it's all based on your role. How can you help improve that process, that sharing of knowledge, and making sure that it's fair and equitable? Some people, you know, they can come in with their grievances or whatever, but what are you going to do about that?
When I mentioned earlier about really making the department run more efficient, one aspect of that is really looking at sales on a month-to-month basis and assessments, taking assessments and sales and comparing them on a month-to-month basis, looking at all of those sales and assessments and looking at what our ratios are of those particular type of properties and looking at, and then actually taking those sales and saying, okay, these are the commercial, these are the residential, where is the inequities here? And really kind of tackling that ahead of time so that I know, you know, what, you know, needs more adjustment versus certain class of properties for other class of properties. And then, you know, basically letting everybody, letting, you know, Kevin know ahead of time that, you know, what needs to be adjusted so that the constituents and the taxpayers know, you know, what we're looking at going forward.
Okay, I guess it's for Kevin to let us know what's going on. We've asked for this information, well, before our constituents receive their increases, we should know.
So the database is set, Vision is set, the assessor has to essentially say that it's a snapshot of April 1st. And then it's a process of the assessor making sure that those numbers are accurate before submitting them to the state. The timeframe for the department to do so is several months, July or so before you submit to the state. The challenge there is if, now, if they can get, become a more efficient department with time, with the new staff, a lot of those can be set sooner, closer and closer to April, or at least have some numbers. But publishing that information is a challenge for you, Nick, can you explain that?
Yeah, I think, add upon what Kevin said, because we've gone through a lot of turnover-- turnover in the department, now that we're established here, I, what I want to do is be able to have, forecast better, and have all these numbers specifically, where, what are we looking at for all these types of properties? What, you know, where, what do we need to do to be able to, we, we're basically agents of the state, so we have, there's certain things that we have to do that are required by state law, so, but I can go over all that with Kevin. Once I, you know, we get our full staff here, we're going to really focus more on making sure where, where we have our numbers, where they need to be, and, and basically, we can talk about, you know, what we need to increase or decrease, and ultimately let the taxpayers know what we're, you know, looking at going forward for, if they're going to see an increase on their tax bills.
All right, because it's also a huge part of this very intense budget process. The two things that we don't know in time for our decision are your, your analysis of the revenue, and also of the state's, what's that word, Ellen? What do they give us?
Well, what the assessed value of the community is, that's the question, that's the really...
Right, and the school department, the money that the school gets.
How much the, yes, how much...
So, those are two huge things, and so it's almost impossible for us to make a good decision here based on facts, we're going on projections, which I understand projections.
It's, to some degree, we don't have much of a choice, but we have to project, to a certain degree, we have to project. To add upon also what Kevin said, is like, we, it's like a snapshot in time with assessors in, in the state, that, we, we value everything by April 1st of each year, that's based on state law, so we actually look at all these properties in terms of, like, new construction in certain properties, and we take, we take, we value what percent complete that building is by April 1st.
Right, so I understand that, and I understand that there's a, a long analysis and you have state procedures, but I'm just trying to express that your information is very valuable to us during this budgeting process, and the sooner we can have that...
Right.
You know, the closer and tighter it gets, the better for all of us in Saco, so we don't have to talk about, you know, raising taxes and then not having to raise taxes, and...
I think what, we, we deal specifically with the valuations, and making sure that the valuations are fair and equitable, that's, we kind of try to stay within what we do, which is that...
Well, you should, that's good.
And, so, and then at that, you know, at that point, we can really see what we're looking at for valuations, and making sure that they're fair and equitable at that point, and...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Copeland, anything else?
No, sir.
Nope. Councilor Minter?
I have the, the million-dollar question of the night, a couple of them. When you go into the Vision appraisal system, and we had an individual come before us looking for some property tax relief over the last year, and a number of the items in that, I used to do property and casualty insurance, so you're talking about the quality of the roof, what the roof is, is it metal, is it shingles, this kind of thing? Is it carpet, is it vinyl, that on the floors, or is it hardwood, or whatever? Obviously, when that house gets put into the system, those parameters, those qualities, if you will, is it an upgraded bathroom, is it a standard bathroom, is it three-quarters, is it full bath, all that kind of stuff, goes into the system.
Right.
Does the system degrade that over time? Because obviously, that carpet 10 years later isn't of that quality that it was the day the house was built, or that vinyl floor, or those shingles on the roof. Is there any degradation of those parameters as it goes in, so that the homeowner, you know, their property value isn't, just because the neighborhood's going that way, doesn't really mean their house is worth that per se, because that new buyer is going to be needing to put a roof on it, they're going to be needing to do a lot of other things, and therefore, it's kind of artificially inflating it to say they're apples and apples when they may not be.
In our Vision software, we have a section for depreciation, so we, we build tables in, depreciation tables in. So, there is a, a year that the house was built, and then there's a year, we call it the effective year, which is based on depreciation. So, when we're doing any type of updates or looking at neighborhoods, we're looking at these properties and looking at what our depreciation code is, and comparing them to other properties that are similar in terms of condition.
Okay.
So, you, you're identifying what those components are, the structure, like the flooring, the roof, and then you have a separate depreciation code that really resembles the whole structure.
Okay, thank you. One second question, with respect to the overlay, when we go in and, you know, we get a valuation from Augusta that's going to go up $50 million for the city of Saco, or whatever the number might be, how are we, are we applying that as much as we possibly can equally across all properties? Or there are some that we also know that, well, this one's down at the 90% level, and we're trying to get everybody up to 93, so this one may get hit a little harder, because they were at 90, and now we're bringing, we need to bring it up to 93, but everybody else went up a half, so now they got to come up three and a half, as opposed to, or are we past that stage of your efforts to get Saco up to the norm?
Well, as, as far as the overlay, maybe I'm, the overlay...
Two different questions.
Okay, because, all right. The, the state, every year, they do a value, they do a state valuation of all of our properties, and they analyze the different classes of properties and what the ratios are of assessed to sale. So, it's basic, we, what we want to do is make sure that they're all pretty, pretty tight and at the same ratio. So, they do that on a year-to-year basis, and, so, what, what we'll do is we'll do different analysis, say, okay, this is what we need to do to get to this ratio for this class of properties, based on what the state came up with, or, and then, you know, to make all those ratios pretty consistent, so.
And then the second half, are, are we through that? I know there was a lot of discussion a year ago, where a lot of the properties were being brought up to that minimum level because they had lagged behind. Are we pretty much past that now, so that we don't have people maybe out in Word 1 and Word 2 that get hit hard on their, their acreage or whatever, and see that big $800 or $1,000 increase?
You're not going to see increases like that this year, but you will in some, some of the neighborhoods will have to in order to, because the market is still really hot, you're still seeing a lot of sales, so you have to adjust.
Yeah, I think that, that goes back to the beginning of my presentation, we talk about all the growth that we've seen in Saco, which makes it a little bit, you know, makes it more challenging for us to be able to look at these different classes of properties, and really, it makes it more difficult for us, or just say, more, more of a challenge for us to really make our ratios more consistent, because of all the growth that we've seen, so, I mean, all you have to do is really look at the numbers of the sale prices and see, and look at our assessments in general, and see, you know, what our, you know, our average ratio is, so.
Which is?
Somewhere in the high 80s, like 86%. Yeah, so, so...
It's 91.
Yeah. So, we, what, so 86% is basically our average ratio right now. So, if you take all of our sales, and you, you take an assessed value to a sale price, on the average, you're looking at somewhere in that percent range, or that, that just shows you where our assessments are in comparison to where the market is.
So, some properties will see an increase.
So, under state law, we're supposed to be within a particular range, 93 to...
91.
91 to 109%, and we're at 86%?
On average. 91 is if you want to get full val, full exemption on the exemption. So, 20,000 is a homestead exemption. For anybody who has a property that's at least worth 20,000, they can get up to 20,000 as an exemption for their property. State statutes say your overall ratio has to be between 91 and 110% to be able to get that 20,000 off the homestead, because they allow 10% variance from what your ratio is. So, we can claim 100% on that certified ratio, therefore get $20,000, the homeowner can get $20,000 off on their homestead.
So, we allow the, the homestead exemption at 20, but we're not getting credit for that because we're at 86?
No.
No, the homeowner will get less than 20,000.
Yeah, right, right, so...
The homeowner actually gets less.
If our ratio stays at 86...
They, they, they actually get less on their homestead amount, as far as the exempt amount. So, if, as a city, if we can certify 100%, then the state will re, the state will allow us to give each individual $20,000 on their homestead, because that's what the state allows. If, so, but we have to be within a specific ratio for the state to allow us to get $20,000 on each individual property that has a homestead, and that ratio has to be at least 91%. Because the state statutes allow us to go, to certify as a city, 10% variance from whatever, 10% variance from whatever that certified ratio that they declare. So, by, by me saying that we're at 86%, 10% above the 86% doesn't bring us to 100%. Therefore, the state will not allow us to give a full $20,000 exemption on those individual homesteads.
Good answer.
So, do we get 96% of that exemption? Because that's 10% of 86%.
Right, right, so that, basically, on your tax bill, it would say, it wouldn't say 20,000, it would say 96% of the 20,000.
And can you imagine all the phone numbers we would get related to that?
And that's because of what we've seen in, you know, this market that we're...
Oh, I understand, but now, we're, but what we're saying here is that we're actually assessed at 86%, but the state allows us a 10% range upward, which puts us between the 91 and 110%.
There's a declared ratio, and there's a cert, the, the city can actually certify within, variance within 10% from that ratio that the state declares. So, the state declares a ratio, and the city can actually certify, but, like with the, the exemptions, the state reimburses us for the exemptions. So, they won't reimburse us the full amount. If we, if I, if, as the assessor, if I claim $20,000 for each one of those exemptions on the homestead, and we only have an 86% ratio, they're not going to give us the full 62 and a half reimbursement, if that's what it remains going forward with the new budget, but, does that make sense?
And that's the work that Nick does between now, April 1st, and the time that he sends the information to the state, is work to adjust and, and line up as closely to the market as we can, without pushing people out of their homes, because their tax bill is going to go up $600 or whatever, just based on value.
So, if we had a citywide reassessment, spending the hundreds of thousands of dollars that would take, then people would see, could possibly see a significant increase...
Yes.
...in the assessed value of their homes.
I mean, you say significant increase, I mean, an increase, because it would, it depends where we, we would want to go with our ratios, and where we want to be consistently go with our ratios. So, if we want to go, if we want to go to 95%, let's say, on our ratios, then that would be a significant, you know, would be a 9% increase. So, it really depends on where we want to go with our ratios, and where, how consistent we want to be with our ratios. The big question is, like, we've, we've touched upon here, is that if we don't hit that 91%, the, the taxpayers aren't going to get the full exemptions on their property. They're not going to get the 20,000 on the homestead, they're not going to get the six on the veterans, it's just, there's nothing we can do about that, that's just state statutes, so. And we can, the range of ra, the range is 70 to 110%, the range that the state allows.
Okay.
So...
70 to 110.
Mayor.
Go ahead. So, when we're in a market like we are right now, where homes are selling, it's a competitive market, people are willing to pay a premium above-market possibly for a home, it's actually driving our ratio down, which puts us in a worse shape, if you will, because then when the state comes back and bases it on those higher sales prices, then in order to keep the ratio close, we have to raise the taxes, basically.
Not the taxes, just the assessed values.
Yeah.
The assessed value.
I, I think we don't want to confuse the assessments and the taxes.
Taxes, which then gives more play money for council. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
So, and, and don't forget, so, if the expenditures stayed flat, if you didn't increase a single dollar from one year to the next, and the assessed values went up, the mill rate would go down, but the assessed values would be higher, so the taxpayer would still pay the same amount, amount on the taxes. But when you have increasing expenditures on the, on the, from the budget side, and you have increased values in your, in your home, a taxpayer is going to see a larger tax bill.
Yes, and that's what I'm afraid is going to happen this year.
Yes.
So, any additional questions to my left?
I think you give yourself a raise.
Uh, yeah, right. Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nick, thank you for the presentation. The 2020 evaluation increase according to the Saco budget has it at $36 million, 30,000 and change. Just, do you have any kind of idea if we're tracking for that number? I believe that number was talked about at the directive budget, the, the directive council meeting, so are we tracking at that number, or are we tracking above that number?
We, like we ta, like we talked about with the April 1st, you know, day, we, we just hit that April 1st day. So, we're really in the process now of putting in all that new construction. We, we basically went around the city, took pictures of all under construction properties, and right now, we're in the process of putting that data into Vision. So, once we really put that data into, into our Vision software, really see where those values come up, out to, you know, then we'll really, I think we'll probably know more in a couple weeks or so from now, once we, go ahead, Kevin.
So, I was just going to ask, Nick, can you provide, maybe help us and the council by providing a number, say, for the May, what is it, the May 6th date we have coming up?
Right.
So, we understand what that number could potentially be?
Okay.
Doesn't have to be perfectly accurate, but it would help the council in making decisions about how to spend.
Absolutely.
Okay. Does that help?
That, that would be excellent, May 6th. Is that possible?
Yeah, that's a good date, it gives us time. Yeah, that's, that's great.
Certainly help with approval of RADS.
So, any other questions to my right?
That one you wanted?
Any additional questions to my left? Any additional questions to my right? Mr. Sutherland, has anything to say?
No, I'll sit, thank you.
Ms. Ellis, I'll sit.
Mr. DeJardin, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Your presentation was actually longer than economic development.
I guess since I'm new, you, I, you had some questions for us.
It's because we got a course in assessing.
Ms. Hughes. The next department is the City Clerk's Department, very important for us all.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. So, I'm going to start with the mission statement. The Office of the City Clerk will strive to deliver the highest level of professionalism and customer service to the residents of Saco. We will, through dedicated employees, continue to be stewards of municipal records and provide reasonable access to said records, conduct elections, enabling our residents to exercise their constitutional rights, and provide financial assistance, assistance to indigent in our community. The office consists of basically three full-time equivalents, the City Clerk, which is myself, the Deputy Clerk General Assistance Director, which is William Rankin. Mr. Rankin interviews general assistance applicants on Tuesdays and Thursdays by appointments, and also takes emergency applications generally during the week. We also have our Deputy Registrar Judith Tripp, and the Assistant City Clerk Ronald Roachvert. Both of them work part-time, basically on an as-needed basis, and the last line consists of our seasonal employees, basically all of our election workers. The department responsibilities include elections, records, license, and agent, and general Some of the major accomplishments for, starting for fiscal year... Some of the major accomplishments for starting for fiscal year 19 were, we started out with school board candidates, we issued a certified nomination papers and campaign finance reports for candidates for wards 1, 3, 5, and 7. Then we moved on to the November 2018 election. As you can see, we had quite a few absentee ballots, 3,410 with 94.75 that were actually returned and accepted. The total of voters for all seven wards equaled out to 9,278, which equates to 60.65% voter turnout.
Wow.
Another thing that the department does is each person that goes to the polls and has their name checked off on the incoming list, the Deputy Registrar, she manually goes and enters all 9,278 voters with a little bar scanner, and we check that multiple times to make sure that we're accurate and recording everyone's voter history. In addition, we certified 3,761 petition signatures, and I listed three of the petitions that we have going right now and how many signatures we certified for each of those. We've also had 24 Freedom of Access Act requests, and we're currently working on a couple of charter amendments to try to save a little money trying to balance continued notifications to residents with reduced costs. And another thing that we've worked on is updating our standard operation procedures manual. That was last updated in 2013. We had two RADS last year, and both of those have been spent. One of them was on temporary election help for processing the absentee ballots, and the other one was we needed to rent seven additional scanner tabulators for the November election. Anytime that we have a ranked choice vote, we're not able, and a municipal ballot, we will not be able to piggyback elections like we have done in the past, we'll need to rent those machines. One of the major challenges for our department is the absentee ballot staffing. As more people take advantage of the convenience and ease of absentee voting up to three months before an election, this continues to put a strain on the office during the last 30 days before Election Day. This is mainly during the November elections where voter numbers are significantly higher than the June elections. So again, this year, you'll see a request above directive to provide additional funding for temporary staff to assist in processing absentee ballots. What I'm looking to do is something a little different. This year, I'm looking to keep the Assistant Clerk in the office to provide coverage for the regular countertransactions and to assist with some of the election preparations. In the past, that individual has worked basically just processing absentee ballots. So I'm looking to hire that additional person to take the strain off the office personnel and avoid the potential for staff rushing and making critical errors. As well, I'll be able to do the many requirements of the Secretary of State's office to prepare for Election Day, and the GA Director will be able to hold regular office hours. This is basically an overview of the department. 51.3% is wages, general assistance includes 34.6%, and then you can see the other office On the budget summary, you'll notice that there is money in there for RADS, and the three RADS that I'm requesting were included in the fiscal year 2020 recommended budget. Each of those RADS listed above, one of them is the presidential primary for March 2020. This one is still up in the air right now, they had a public hearing on February 6th, and I've checked with the Secretary of State's office, and they're, they haven't heard anything as of yet, so that is being included in, in this request. We also have a zone and revision, zone and ordinance revision, as well as temporary help. So on the first RAD, I, I'm sorry. Yeah. On the first RAD, you'll notice I've listed kind of a line-by-line item, itemization here. The only thing that's not included in here is the wages for all the work that the Public Works Department Facilities Department does, as well as the Police Department and the POC and Rec Department. Right, and that RAD would be $13,343.39. The second RAD is for the zone and ordinance revision. As you're all aware, the city's taken a comprehensive look at the zone and land use practices that were adopted in 1985. It's expected that this will be a substantial ordinance rewrite, and in 2017, when the zone and ordinance was added to the city code, that cost roughly 8,500. So we're budgeting 8,000 to take care of that. The third RAD is for the absentee ballot staff. As I mentioned earlier, looking to do things a little different to added, keep additional staff in the office, and I'm requesting one person for $2,045. Covers that, any questions?
Thank you very much. Ms. Hughes. Any questions to my right? Councilor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, just had a question, and it, and it's not really for you, it's actually for Denise, but I don't see her, maybe Kevin can answer. The zone and ordinance revision, maintenance of effort, $8,000 RAD, is that something that can be paid for out of a TIF district?
I had the same thought. Uh, I'll look into it, I'm sure it can at least cover part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions to my right? Questions to my left? Counselor Johnson?
Just want to make sure I'm tracking this right. Under the temporary seasonal wages line, for FY, FY 19, we have $28,000 budgeted. The directive this year is an increase of almost $11,000 to 38, and then we have a request above directive of 13,000 for a total of 52.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So this current year, we had $28,000 budgeted for the temp and seasonal wages line. There's an increase in this budget of about $11,000, and then there's also a RAD for 13,000 or so.
Uh, yes, so the significant increase in the temporary seasonal wages has to do with the fact that the senior volunteer program, the hours were reduced to line up with the main minimum wage. So we considered it a contracted increase because the main minimum wage has reduced the hours of the senior volunteers such that we needed to compensate for it, for Michelle, in order to ensure sufficient staffing for our elections in the amount of 10,000. So that's why that bumped up so high.
Well, thank you, that makes sense.
Thank you. Any additional questions to my left? Questions to my left, to my right? Any questions? Mr. Sutherland.
You want to move on to the administrative update, then?
Uh, yeah, just one moment. Anything, Ms. Salas? No? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Hughes. I just want to say there are comment and question forms in the back of the room and on the website.
Yep, and we have been...
Please use them so that city staff can keep everybody updated as well as they Can we go with a short break?
Sure.
We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Here you go.
Got to grill them, bring down the money.
Yeah, yep.
I'm going to find a way to do a better evaluation system. I mean, I know I'm not doing one, but like where I live, on Ross Ridge, right, my house is no mansion, but the, the, on Goose Fair Lane, which sits right behind me, there's a, there's an older retired teacher, she's actually still Navy teacher, but she's, she's a teacher over there, her name's Julia, and her taxes sky hard. She's a small little house, and, and it's because of Ross Ridge, and it's because of Lombardi Estates.
So when I look at, I look at the improvements, I look at the two differences. So I'll see, okay, was it land or was it building? Building doesn't go up with land, well then I get jarring, like, I understand that a little bit more.
Yeah, if it's improvements, right, you've done the work.
I haven't done anything.
Right.
If anything, it's, oh, that's over time. If I haven't done anything...
That's, that's one thing I don't understand.
My $10,000 computer about 20 years ago is a problem. I'm exaggerating.
No, but I know what you mean, I, I, I just don't understand.
For your cable TV.
Why should that affect somebody's, that's, hasn't done nothing?
Her toes is like a double line. You know, that's not going up, that's going down.
Yeah.
You know, so why is her taxes...
I want to put a marble table inside.
Why is her taxes sky hard? Because somebody on, you know, on Ross Ridge wanted to pay $400,000 for a...
That's what, like, I get the land argument, why the land would go up, but I don't get the improvements going. Just because you decided to put marble, you decided to...
Right.
Chandeliers, you, what's that mean about my average-cost TV? Not TV, but average-cost items.
But even, look at like my, I got 1.6 acres.
Yeah.
Do you know that a lot of it I can't use?
Yes.
Because of the goose fair brook behind me?
I can't, I can't even consider it. They should.
I pay $6,000 in taxes, roughly. That's expensive. Well, Mr. Sutherland, let's look, call the meeting out of recess and let's have an administrative update.
Sure.
It's my understanding, it's my understanding.
But like, the folks around, they got the... Excuse me, councilors. We're going to start.
Just, just a quick, quick couple of items. This Thursday, our Senator and our, our elected officials at the state level have submitted a bill for about $24 million for improvements to the 195 pass and some of the decisions that are sort of being moved through the process now. There's a bill, the bill is being discussed on Thursday. I intend to go up there and advocate for those resources to be put aside. Uh, this is a really good use of rainy day funds, it's a one-time expense, so I'll be up there for, for that on Thursday morning. I, and again, I wanted to use some of the administrative update time during budget workshops to go over questions that come up from, from members of the public, friendly by nature, budget documents, current budget process, you can find all of the links to our recommended budget, the updates that the Finance Director has identified and added to, including the mill rate calculator. So all of this item, all of our items are on this page of the budget materials. As well as, in budget materials, there are questions that are being asked. So we've been adding these questions as they've come in. And I went over a few of them the other day, and we've had quite a few additional ones. And the question is, "It appears there are some discrepancies in the 2020 budget in regards to which funds employees are paid out of and how the number per each department is counted. Please review page 126 of the audit book versus what is in the budget book." Page 126 of the audit book has actual employee headcount, the FTE headcount is in, the bud, in the budget book is the budgeted headcount, including open positions. We elected not to break out employees by fund in the budget book. The mayor has requested this as a change, and it will be featured in the final approved budget book. Next question, "Have the original bond purposes for energy projects been completed? If so, should the balance be placed in surplus and fund closed out?" Two of the three bond, bond projects have been completed, the middle school boiler and the police department HVAC. The balance on the school, middle school boiler, less cost overruns on the police department HVAC is set to be returned to the general fund to compensate for general fund expenses incurred on the project. The balance on the other energy projects, $100,000 as approved by the voters, plus $34,000 of bond premium, has yet to be spent and will be held in qualified accounts at a restricted "Is the council aware that this is, that with its budget approval, 27 positions have been added under this administration?" This is based off of the headcount report from the FY 2017 budget, which had 158 FTEs in FY 2016 and included fractions of part-time positions, versus the FY 2019 budget, which had 185.5, where all part-time positions equate to .5 an FTE. Comparing those two figures, that is an increase of 27.5. So again, it's a little bit of an apples-to-apples, and I don't have the data back from 2016 to tell you what it really comparison is. "Please post a current financial report in Excel spreadsheet, this allows a citizen to see the various funds spent to date other than what is in the budget book. Current financials will be available when our partners at Paychex have provided us with a balanced general ledger entry." "Is there a way to move the budget book and make it a standalone document on the budget website page? On the homepage, just below the friendly by nature photos, click the button labeled budget documents. On the FY 2020 budget page, click current budget process. Under phase three, you'll find the links for all of the budget-related documents, including the recommended budget." So, this is the process we've set up for this year, we will also consider changes for future years. "Have all union contracts been negotiated and implemented? The city of Saco has seven unions. For fiscal year 2019, our current fiscal year ending June 30th, six of the seven union contracts have been approved by council, and budget amendments have also been approved to move resources into those departments. For fiscal year 20, five of the seven union contracts have been approved by council and are currently included in the directive column of the budget." Those are my administrative updates for this evening.
Thank you very much. Questions to my right, Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to, and I think I might be thinking the same thing, Counselor Mentorn is thinking about, that hearing that you brought up, that's this Thursday, there was something brought up about the, when we partnered with the DOT on that study, that was just partnering in the study, right? Not the actual project costs.
Correct. Just the study.
I've, I've got that.
Yeah.
Okay, well... Yeah, there was a post out on Facebook that implied that the project costs were going to be shared 20% by the city, which was incorrect, and the public needs to understand that that's incorrect. What Senator Shanet's bill is doing is he wanted to put money into the budget because this is a year when you submit things, next year, it's only the governor's submissions or carryovers that get funded. So he wanted to put a block of money out there to fund Exit 36, so that when the study does come in, there'll at least be some amount of appropriation available to start the process with. And that's the purpose of his bill.
Yeah, and I've been working with the engineering firm that was hired to get some data and information to take with me, because the, we've had a couple of public hearings about what the, the engineers have done and the contractors have done, and we've gathered some good information, and in fact, several of you, several of the councilors were at the last meeting a month ago, and it was well-attended, and the end results, I, I think there's a solution. It's going to cost a lot of money, but it's not going to be on the backs of the Saco residents at this time. The MTA sees that they would actually have an increase in vehicle traffic on it and could offset a lot of the cost of this. But that additional 24 is definitely needed from the state to help make this work, so fingers crossed.
Any additional questions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Any questions to my left? Any comments? Questions, oh, Counselor Mentorn.
Counselor Johnston? Would like to welcome Anthony Scavuzzo as our Executive Director of Shuttle Bus. Today was his first day, so we want to welcome him, and he will be before us, I believe, on the 29th.
Oh, excellent.
Oh, excellent. And Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Could we be provided with an estimation of what the increase of the, say, two police officers or four police officers would be for future years based on the new contracts?
The dollar amounts in the, you're looking further out?
Yeah, I'm just saying, so if we approved two this year, what would that amount be next year? And so on and so forth. Thank you.
Including COLA. Any additional questions to my left? Seeing none to my right? Councilor Gay.
Is this council discussion comment?
Right in a second.
Okay.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Are we done? Counselor, it's council comment time.
Ah, thank you.
Counselor Gay is first.
Thank you, Mr. Van. We have a special presentation to give and we would like to get an update from National Land Ops in Saco. Plus they have a workshop on after the. Right now we currently only have one and it's the way we store. And I don't believe it's been updated since the 80s.
Is that it? Thank you very much. Any additional council comment to my right? Council comment to my left? Any council comment to my left? Seeing none. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.